Welcome to the Brentwood Village Road Rehabilitation Project Equalization Hearing. It's Tuesday, July 8, 2025, around 8:15 or 5:15. Mr. Gilbert, or is it Ms. Kennedy?
It is me.
Roll call. Roll call.
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Braun?
Present.
Mr. Hahnlo?
Present.
Mr. Burning?
Present.
All trustees are present.
Thank you. I apologize, my iPad died upstairs and I was not able to get it to.
Here, you want this?
Thank you. No, it's just, it's stinking. So, this hearing is for Brentwood Village Road Rehabilitation Project, as you indicated, Mr. Burning, the streets associated with this project were Johnquill, Elm Tree, Redbird, Blue Jay, Thunderbird, John Fred Pelican, Mockingbird from Hempstead to Cross County, and Constance. The public hearing is being held in accordance with Ohio Vice Code 5573.10. Notice was given in compliance with sunshine law and the requirements of the ORC 5573.10 on June 17th and July 4th of 2025 in the Cincinnati Court Index. This particular project replaced all concrete curb, replaced all catch basins, repaired storm sewers and catch basins, and removed existing asphalt and pavement resurfacing with three inches of new blacktop. This is the 27th project that we've done through the assessment process. Since the neighborhood master plan was adopted in May of 2016, as the board is aware, there are two types of assessments, there's the mandatory and the voluntary. This is considered a mandatory assessment because of the grant funding associated with it. There are a total of 214 parcels on nine streets representing the property owners to be assessed for the project. And the assessment to each property owner for the project will be $22.72 per year for 10 years, apportioned and paid equally by the property owners abutting the road improvement as established by Ohio Vice Code 5573.07, Section A, Subsection 1. On March 12th of 2024, the Board of Trustees passed Resolution 21-2, I'm sorry, 212024, determining the necessity for road improvement. Plans and specifications and schedule of assessments were prepared and then were reviewed and approved by the county engineer as required by the Ohio Vice Code. As mentioned, notice was given on the 17th and the 4th, I'm sorry, the 17th of June and the 4th of July of 2025, accepting written or in-person objections. Purpose of this hearing is to consider objections to the scheduled assessments, the board can then change the assessment schedule if necessary. The equalization hearing is not whether or not to do the project, obviously because it is already completed. The project was awarded to Adlito Construction by the Board of Trustees at a regular meeting on Tuesday, February 13th of 2024, and the next step of this process is to have the board adopt a resolution with the estimates and specifications reported by the county engineer for said improvements. There is a resolution on the agenda for that. So, I can say that we haven't received any objections or comments or anything, correct? Kathleen?
Correct. We have not.
So, with that being said, unless there's any questions or comments from people in attendance, that concludes my report regarding the assessment.
So, we'll just do a resolution. Do you have any questions on the?
No.
Okay.
Okay. So, with that then, I would just say then, you know.
We'll adjourn.
Adjourn.
Come back and.
Then we have the regular meeting.
Okay. So, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Please adjourn.
Hello, everybody, welcome to the Springfield Township Board of Trustees Meeting. It's July 8, 2025, at 5:30 PM. Mr. Burning, can we have a roll call?
Yes, Mr. Burning, Ms. Braun?
Present.
Mr. Hahnlo?
Present.
Mr. Burning?
Present.
All trustees are present.
You could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Thank you. First, we have the 2026 Tax Budget Public Hearing. Mr. Gilbert?
Thank you, Mr. Burning. Every July, as the board is aware, we have to go through the process of having a public hearing and adopting our annual tax budget. And also, as the board has discussed in many years previous, the tax budget is essentially a planning document for us in preparation for our actual permanent and temporary appropriation measures at the end of the year and the beginning of the preceding year. And in this particular case, the tax budget that we're presenting tonight is a very conservative estimate in terms of what we expect to spend, meaning we are showing more probably expenditures than actually will happen, and also we're very conservative in terms of anticipated revenue. Again, because this document, under Ohio Vice Code, the purpose of this document as a planning tool is to allow the county then to certify our certificate of resources, and that, what, resources, and what that does, it allows us to lock in the levies, it essentially demonstrates that the levies that are on the tax duplicates now are necessary for our expenditures. Additionally, what it does, it sets the ceiling in terms of what we can spend in the subsequent year until there's an amended certificate of resources, which we typically do because, as we indicated, we're very conservative in terms of our revenue that we show, and also because this document shows both actuals from two previous years, it shows the actuals from the first half of this year, and the estimated revenue expenditures from this year, and then also the estimated revenue expenditures for '26. And amended certificate will be necessary because undoubtedly we will spend less than what we anticipated this year, we'll bring in probably more revenue than we anticipated, not that we anticipate, but that we show on the tax budget. And the reason we do that is to ensure that we're never in a situation where we're actually planning to spend more than we have in revenue, or that we have in cash available balance. So, that's why, from a budget standpoint, it's not a true budget as much as it is sort of a forecasting and planning tool for us to create our actual appropriations measures at the end of the year. So, as required by their Ohio Vice Code 5705.28, Section B, Subsection 1, this particular hearing was put in the paper 10 days prior to the hearing. The budget has to be adopted on or before July 20th, and the Board of Trustees have to adopt this by July 15th, which is why we have it here tonight on the 8th. On September 1st, the Budget Commission is required to return the official certificate of estimated resources and estimated tax rates back to us, and then October 1st, the Board of Trustees will pass a resolution accepting the amounts and rates or appeal to the Board of Tax Appeals within 30 days. We have to do that prior to the 1st of October. As I indicated, the required documents we show are just two prior years of actual receipts and disbursements and fund balances, and then, as I indicated, actual receipts and disbursements for this current year, and estimated for the latter half of this year and for next year. The next steps actually in the process won't occur until, like I said, October, but then subsequently it'll happen in December when we adopt our temporary appropriations and then our permanent in March. So, the board has seen copies of the tax budget, this document has been on file here at the administration offices for the past two weeks to allow the public to view it. And so unless there are any questions or comments or concerns regarding what's being proposed on the tax budget, that concludes my presentation. But again, it is a pretty straightforward planning document that we do every year.
Joe?
I have no questions.
Nobody has any questions?
Nope.
No.
So, thank you, Mr. Gilbert. Mr. Burning, can we have the approval of the minutes from the June meeting?
Mr. Burning, I would first ask if there's anyone in the public that would have any comments or questions regarding the tax budget?
Does anybody have any questions regarding the tax budget? Thank you.
Then we close the public, close the public hearing?
Motion.
Chris? Have a motion to close?
Motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Close.
Thank you.
We open the regular meeting now?
We're in the regular meeting. It says you can move ahead with the next agenda.
All right.
Approval of minutes?
Can we approve the minutes for the regular session, June 10, 2025, and the regular work session, June 24, 2025? Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Mr. Burning, can we have a financial report?
Yes. For the month ending June 30, 2025, the township's expenditures were $3,268,852.36, and receipts were $1,1092.41. That left us with an ending cash balance of $26,339,656. That includes obligations for expenditure, payroll, regular operating costs, ongoing capital improvement projects and investments. What I do request is a motion to approve the receipts, warrants, payroll expenditures, updated and current revenue and reports for the period ending June 30, 2025. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, and I want everyone to know that our financial records are available here at the Township Building during regular business hours and on our website 24/7. Thank you, Mr. Burning.
Thank you, Mr. Burning. Mr. Gilbert, do you have a Department Action and Discussion Items Report, please?
I do. This evening, we have a light agenda. I don't have any action items for the board. That does not mean that, obviously, there's not a lot going on, it just means that those projects haven't reached the point in the process to where I have to bring anything before the board for formal review and approval. I know that we have, and we'll get to, when we get to the departmental reports, but we have a lot of projects going on. I know in particular, in the next probably month or two, I will bring several actions before the board to create a, three different tax increment financing districts for various developments that we have going on. The board will require to pass a resolution to require, I'm sorry, to create those districts. That is the first step in creating a process by which the township will be able to receive revenue once these developments are done, that will go into a special fund that will then be allowed to be used for capital improvements, both for the development itself, but also for quality of life amenities that the board chooses to spend those revenues on, for that purpose. So, that will be the first step in creating those TIF districts will probably be in August, at the August meeting. I have a conversations, I have a phone call scheduled with our bond counsel tomorrow to get those documents prepared. That will be, we have one TIF, actually, we have two TIF districts now in the township, this will be adding three additional to those two for a total of five. And if people aren't aware what a TIF district allows for, it allows us to capture revenue that would traditionally go to other sources. School district in the county, we would capture that revenue in general, we, most of the time, we make the school district whole, so they're never hurt by capturing those revenues, but some, sometimes the township is able to capture revenue that would traditionally go to the county. We can then use it here for the benefit of township residents to carry out various improvements and infrastructure-related projects or capital projects, but they have to benefit the TIF district, so there is a limited geographical area in which those things can happen. So, look for that next, next month. Other than that, as I said, you know, the board, we've talked in various work sessions about all the things that are going on, but in the personal update, we've had a busy time in the fire department, it seems, Chief Miller. We had the hiring of Noah Sidley, 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 as a part-time medic firefighter. We had the hiring of Caleb Sales as a part-time medic firefighter, the hiring of Christopher Rapley?
Yeah.
Wow, I got that right. Part-time paramedic only, Emma Ramsey, part-time AMT firefighter, and Sophia House as a part-time AMT firefighter, and the hiring of Jacqueline Hedrick as a part-time AMT firefighter. And then we also had the new hire of Ashton Day as a dispatcher within the police department. No activity hiring in Public Works or the Art Center or DART. With that, I will turn it over to Kim for community events and programs.
Thank you. This Friday is our second community concert featuring a band called Top This Band, and we're also doing this as a celebration to the surge project being completed. The surge artists' original artworks will be on display, and then they will also have booths at the concert. Arts Connect is also hosting a new event, it's just a small event over at High Grain Brewery, it's called an Arts and Drafts Bash, and we're doing the celebration of a new partnership with them, where we're doing an Arts Connect beer art classes over there, and pottery painting kits that kids can, kids and adults can take advantage of while they're over there, and then pick those items back up over at the Art Center, just gives us another way to bring people over to the Art Center. So, the Arts and Drafts Bash is just an open invitation at 4:30 from seven, or I'm sorry, on the 23rd, just to kind of celebrate that connection. And then our final concert will be on July 25th with a band called Apostle Jones.
There's a concert this Friday, correct?
Yes.
Kim, for the public, what time does the concert start?
7 o'clock, goes until 10.
Who is this Friday?
I'm sorry?
Who's this Friday? Who's playing?
Top This Band. Yeah.
Great. Thanks, Kim.
Thank you.
With departmental activity reports, Chief Miller, what's going on in the fire department?
Good evening. I just wanted to just remind you that we have our kids' fire academy going on, starts on Wednesday, ends on Saturday. On Saturday, we have the graduation where we invite the family to come up, they go through obstacle course, our water ball competition, which is usually really fun as long as it's very hot outside. And then we have Finney Town Skyline, who is providing all the food for that event. So, if you see any kids running around this week, that's what that's for. So, also, I wanted to provide an update on our drone unit for the fire department. The fire department, police department, both have certified drone pilots, and that has just been a tremendous resource for the township. The fire department drone unit now is a dispatchable unit through Hamilton County Communication Center, so what this means, in the past, the police department, anytime they needed the fire department drone unit, they would actually have to call the station, talk to a supervisor, explain the situation, the address, everything that's going on. So now, the police department, our police officers can basically get on the radio, contact Communication Center, and have that drone unit dispatched. So, it basically cuts down on, well, basically cuts down on time as far as us receiving all the actual information, goes to our computers, just like any normal fire run or EMS run. So, it's worked out so far, it's been in maybe just the past few months, it's been in service like that, so it's worked out very well among the departments.
Chief, not the drone unit in the entire county?
Yes, it is. So, we actually have, there is another team, we actually, Hamilton County use our team as a dispatchable unit, but that is dispatching the entire team. But yes, our drone, UAS 79, is the only dispatchable drone unit in the county, so it's just, it's a great resource for us and our neighboring jurisdictions that we use it for. Some of the events, though, that we've called, that have been called out just this past month, they've assisted in critical missing, critical missing incidents, we've assisted the police department on locating subjects who fled on foot for various reasons. We've responded to, last week, we responded to a call for a suspicious, suspicious package that was found, so our drone unit actually was able to fly in, look at the package while we kept first responders and the public away from the package, so we could determine that it was safe to enter that area. Last week as well, we got called to Wentworth Lake to assist the Rangers to search for a missing boater. And in this past month, we also assisted our mutual aid jurisdictions with a water rescue that actually involved five kids who had fallen off a tube and were stranded in the middle of the water during a flooding situation. Our drone unit, once they arrived, they were the ones that actually found the kids in the water, and they, over the radio, they were able to provide the information of the rescue boats to have a successful, successful outcome of those, those kids, so it worked out really, really well for our drone unit. So, our drone pilot was able to also stand with the incident commander, so the incident commander could actually see in real time what was going on, so they could deploy additional resources and things like that. So, it's just, just a couple examples of, you know, how the drone unit's been used over the past couple months, and what a great resource we have.
Where were the five kids? What lake or?
It was actually in the Whitewater River, so we got called, called over there to assist them. So, it's just through our mutual aid agreements, no different if we need their boats or their resources, so it's just another resource that we can offer them as well.
Great. Fantastic, too. Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Randy.
Thank you.
Chris?
Good evening. So, over the past 30 days, our staff at the police department has really been busy working on one of the priorities we identified in our strategic plan, and that is really increasing our focus on community engagement. I think when we talk about community engagement, I think it's really important to understand that community engagement has been a foundation of the way we deliver police service for decades here. I think one of the things that we're looking at doing when we're, when we're talking about community engagement is really looking at taking a closer look how to be more intentional and how to be more effective with it. How do we reach more segments of our community? How do we reach the different, the different neighborhoods in our community? And what types of services, programs, and initiatives can we create to actually enhance that engagement with the community? We have, we have a group of officers at the police department that are really excited about this. I think, I think the only challenge is just trying to get them to slow down a little bit and kind of focus on what those priorities are, but they're really excited about getting out, getting in the community, creating these conversations and these connections in the community. And I think part of that focus, too, is community engagement from a law enforcement perspective is not a one-size-fits-all. I think what we're really looking to do is find effective ways that we can engage with the community from all different aspects and all different segments, all for, all from our youth all the way to our senior citizens. And then also, as a part of that community engagement, figure out a way that we can effectively provide crime prevention information when it's critical, and in specific times of the year where we just need to remind the community about certain trends and patterns and things like that. So, it's really focused on what we have going on right now. This afternoon, a couple of our officers actually participated in a talk with Springfield Waycross Media to put a message out through Waycross about the initiatives that we're trying to work on.
What other sort of engagement tactics are we using to have a particular officer sort of assigned to an area, be a point of contact for, for neighborhoods?
Yeah, so that's a really good question. So, one of the things that we're doing is we go out and participate in these community meetings and these neighborhood meetings, we're going to be taking them out with us, and they have a, they have a tremendous amount of initiatives that they want to create and they want to do. For example, our state program has always been a staple of what we do, and it's extremely effective. They're really looking at our state program to see how do we enhance that, how do we increase the participation, and is there another demographic that we can also bring into that state program? We also do our holiday events, we do the helpers and heroes through Target, when we partner with Target to provide Christmas for members of our community, so any way that we can find to engage with these segments of our, our community, that's really what the focus of what we're doing right now.
Perfect. I, I know that that's something we've talked about, and clearly, it's, it's a mission of ours, I think, our internal culture of sort of hospitality, getting out there and meeting with residents, I think that's important, and especially from the police standpoint, I think you guys noticed that the more you engage with, with the communities, the better you're going to be able to address sort of issues when they arise.
Sure.
So, I appreciate you guys taking up that effort.
Sure. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Scott, I don't think you've been busy enough.
No, I, I understand.
Got to find more for you guys to do.
Yeah, for sure, for sure.
So, I know that the most recent road project is finished up, obviously the one we just talked about tonight, right?
Yeah, exactly. I think we touched on that a little bit last, at the last meeting, but the pavement was still actually hot and still going down, but all, the punch list is completed on that, all three streets, we wanted to get resurfaced or done in the Glencoe subdivision, so that's, that's completed.
Awesome. I know that we have an application in, just to the public, where we have an application in for three streets in the Seven Hills neighborhood, as well as putting in a new bus stop on Roosevelt, correct?
Yes.
And we also have an additional application in for streets off of Galworth, which is Spring Dew and Butterfly.
Yes.
And so, we're hoping that we get approval of those grant applications so we can complete those projects next year.
For sure.
We've made a lot of improvements in parks, I know, you guys have done a lot there.
Right. We still have ongoing improvements going on in Seven Hills Park and in Lexington Park right now, and the weather's not been good for us. It just, we're doing the best we can, and I think our brush service, since we've brought that back in, I think we're about year four that we've brought brush service back to the residents of the township, has absolutely doubled from two years ago. So, we're, you know, we're 225 stops in a month, and so, I mean, plus, we had two wind storms, both of them in the north, in the Pleasant Run area, which, that's on top of this.
Yeah.
So, then, I mean, like the report says, our litter, 555 bags of litter in one month that, you know, we did throughout the township, so.
Yeah. And so they do focus on main thoroughfares throughout the township, and the amount of work that, and we talked about this before, that 15 people do out of that department is sort of mind-boggling, but I know they're constantly trying to evaluate what they do and how they do it to see if they can stretch themselves even thinner.
Right.
To do more, but we will continue to evaluate that, and then Scott and I meet every Tuesday morning, we met this morning, he has an idea that can help us with sort of litter collection and different things, so we're eager to bring that to the board when we get that idea flushed out a little more, so. Thanks, Scott, appreciate it. With that, that concludes departmental activity reports, unless there's any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Gilbert. Next, we have resolutions. Resolution number 52, 2025, adopting the 2026 tax budget. Do we have a motion?
2025 tax budget?
No, it's the 20.
26.
Okay.
So move.
Second.
Ms. Braun?
Aye.
Mr. Hahnlo?
Aye.
Mr. Burning?
Aye.
Resolution carries?
Resolution number 53, 2025, adopting the estimates and specifications reported by the county engineer for improvement to Johnquill Lane, Elm Tree Avenue, Redbird Drive, Blue Jay Drive, Thunderbird Drive, John Fred Court, Pelican Drive, Mockingbird Lane from Hempstead Drive to Cross County Highway, and Constance Lane, and approving and confirming the assessment for such improvement and ordering that the improvements proceed. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Ms. Braun?
Aye.
Mr. Hahnlo?
Aye.
Mr. Burning?
Aye.
Resolution carries?
Next is Resolution number 54, 2025, declaring motor vehicles located on public or private property in Springfield Township, Hamilton County, Ohio, to be junk motor vehicles pursuant to revised Code 505.173, and ordering the removal of such vehicles pursuant to Resolution number 80, 2012, and revised Code 505.871. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Ms. Braun?
Aye.
Mr. Hahnlo?
Aye.
Mr. Burning?
Aye.
Resolution carries?
Next is Resolution number 55, 2025, declaring nuisances pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 505.87 at various listed properties within Springfield Township, and authorizing statutory actions necessary to abate the nuisances. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Ms. Braun?
Aye.
Mr. Hahnlo?
Aye.
Mr. Burning?
Aye.
Resolution carries?
Resolution number 56, 2025, establishing assessment for abatement of nuisance and certifying same to the Hamilton County Auditor. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Ms. Braun?
Aye.
Mr. Hahnlo?
Aye.
Mr. Burning?
Aye.
Resolution carries?
Next is Resolution number 57, 2025, supplemental appropriations in the General Fund, Motor Vehicle License Tax Fund, Road and Bridge Fund, Police District Fund, Fire District Fund, and the Public Improvement Tax Increment Equivalency Fund. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Ms. Braun?
Aye.
Mr. Hahnlo?
Aye.
Mr. Burning?
Aye.
Resolution carries?
Next is Resolution number 58, 2025, authorizing the filing of an application pursuant to revised Code 2981.12 and revised Code 3719.11 to authorize construction of property in possession of Springfield Township Police Department that has been unclaimed, lost, abandoned, stolen, forfeited, or otherwise lawfully seized. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Ms. Braun?
Aye.
Mr. Hahnlo?
Aye.
Mr. Burning?
Aye.
Resolution carries?
Okay, next, do we have any old business?
I do not have any old business. Thank you.
I don't have anything under old, no.
Do you have anything under new?
No, not, I do have, we have had some information regarding the Quon chemical site. There was an application for brownfield funds. Unfortunately, we did not, that was through the Hamilton County Land Bank. Unfortunately, it was not awarded. There's some, maybe some systemic changes that the state legislature's looking at, which may impact how those are going to be, how those brownfield funds are going to be put out, but it's a key piece of industrial property in Springfield Township down near I seventy-five and Paddock Road, and we're going to do everything we can with the land bank. Kathleen Kennedy's been working on this for a long time, but the land bank finally obtained ownership of the property, parts in Springfield Township, parts in the city of Cincinnati, and I think it would be a, if there's one thing we're short of in Springfield Township, it's industrial property, which can help alleviate some of our tax, you know, they can help pay taxes and make it easier on the residents, and so we're going to do everything we can to try and get that property cleaned up where it can be redeveloped and put back into use, because right now, we toured the place and it's a mess. I mean, it's that.
And it took forever to take it over.
Yes, it did, to get it away from the kind of speculators that had it, so.
The grants obviously will be necessary because of the remediation involved, the buildings that need to come down. You're talking millions of dollars just to get it to a state where it can actually be redeveloped.
Right.
The grant will be critical for that.
And yes, it is in Springfield Township at I seventy-five and Paddock Road. I know a couple people are kind of like, what? Okay, next, I guess we have citizens' participation.